Thank you.
Good evening. I like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order by roll call, see that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Alsop, who's excused. We'd like to welcome those of you who are here tonight viewing with us here in City Hall, as well as those who may be watching at home or some other device method. We'd like to begin this evening with invocation. Those who would like to join with us may do so. We've asked Councilmember Britt Hatch, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Randy Critten. Could you please stand?
My kind and gracious heavenly Father, as we come before thee for this first meeting of the Cholo City Council for the year 2016, we ask a blessing on the deliberations this evening. We ask that thy Spirit will be with us, that we will do things in a pleasing fashion. We ask a blessing on the members of this community, and we thank thee for the moisture that has fallen. We ask a blessing on those that are mourning tonight for the loss of their soldier, and ask a blessing on them that they will be watched out, watched for, and cared for. We ask a blessing on the personnel that are deployed, that they will be safe, and they'll return home to the arms of their loved ones. Again, we thank thee for the opportunity to serve this community. We love, and we say this in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item tonight is a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city of Cholo, that's not on the regular agenda item, may do so at this time. I see nobody moved. I'll close call to the public and come back to our next item, which is special events. We have a presentation of the comprehensive annual financial report. Justin Johnson, have you come up and introduce Mike Spiker?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce Mike Spiker. He's with Hinton-Burdick CPAs out of Utah, and they have a couple of branch offices, one in Flagstaff, and where's your other one?
Mesquite and Cedar City.
Okay. And Hinton-Burdick's been doing our audit for a number of years now, and we start with our pre-audit work in July, did the fieldwork in September, and wrapped up the CAFER and all the financials the end of last month, and Mike's here to give a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mike.
Honorable Mayor and City Council and City Staff, it's a pleasure for me to be here again tonight. I've been asked to entertain you for 15 minutes by talking about GASB Statement 68, Governmental Accounting Standards Board 68, that deals with accounting for pensions. And we'll talk about that a little bit later, but the city implemented that this last fiscal year. It's probably one of the most comprehensive new GASB since GASB 34, which was issued nearly 10 years ago. So it's a pretty major ordeal. So as part of the audit, when we conduct a financial audit for the city, we're required to review the underlying information or audit the underlying information, the accounts and records and so forth, and then also how the financial statement is put together, the disclosures that are included and so forth. And we're talking about this document that Justin referred to as the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. So that's what we'll be discussing tonight. I've just prepared a few charts and comments on that. If you have any questions throughout the presentation, please feel free to stop me and ask as we go along. So our opinion on the financial statements is found on pages 1 and 3 of the document, and it's an unmodified or a clean opinion. Also, in connection with the governmental audit, we're required to look at the city's internal controls and compliance with laws and regulations. So we've issued a report on that, which is found on page 123 and 124. And again, there were no material weaknesses noted with this year's audit. We had two significant deficiencies noted. We'll talk about here in just a minute. We also do a state compliance report that's specific with the state compliance laws and regulations, and that's found on page 125. And that one also was an unmodified or a clean opinion with no reportable findings. And for fiscal year 2015, similar to last year, we were required to conduct a federal single audit and look at one of the, one or two of the major federal programs of the city last year. And that report's on page 129 and 30 of your CAFER. And again, no major findings or recommendations with that report. So with our findings and recommendations letter, it's a separate document from this, just a couple of pages that hopefully you've received that and looked at that. Management has reviewed that and responded to those findings. Both of these findings are findings that were issued in the previous year. They're both, well, 0901 is related to SASS 115, which relates to accounting or audit adjustments. And that's a very common finding that we issue. We audit about a little over 70 local governments each year, and there's only a handful that don't actually receive that finding. It's a somewhat controversial audit standard that we have to deal with that requires us to issue a finding if there's any audit adjustments that are significant. So something that is really common, you shouldn't be too concerned about. So that brings us to the highlight, I guess if you will, of fiscal year 2015 and the financial statements for this year. So GASB 68, accounting and reporting for pensions, was implemented this fiscal year. And so there are significant changes to the government-wide financial statements and the proprietary funds, but not to, there are no changes to the governmental funds. So your general fund and your HERF fund and so forth should be, they weren't impacted at all by this new standard. There's a significant amount of new footnote disclosures, or probably maybe five to seven new pages that are included that we'll talk a little bit about here in a minute. So the net pension liability that was recognized by the city was 7.8 million for the Arizona State Retirement System and 5.8 million for Public Safety Personnel Retirement System. So that affect, most of it affected the governmental funds, 12.1 million recorded there, and 1.4 million, or about 1.5 million for the governmental, or excuse me, the combined utility funds. So the total net liability, net pension liability that was put on the books this year was 13.6 million. So what's the real effect of that? The restatement adjustment is found on page 67, which kind of details what was put on the books. But basically, with the implementation of GASB 68, there's no real financial change to the accounts and the economic position, or whatever, if you will, of the city. It's just the way that the pension is reported now. And it shouldn't have any effect on any bond ratings that the city will, you know, be dealing with in the future. The bonding companies have always known that this liability is there. It's always been in the footnotes previous to fiscal year 15, just not disclosed to this degree, and it wasn't put on, actually put on the balance sheet. So the bottom line, I guess, is to just keep making the required annual contributions to the retirement plans. And with GASB 68, there were no changes in the requirements to those pension payments. So let's see. Before we move on, are there any questions on GASB 68? One thing that I wanted to point out, I guess, is on page 62 of your CAFER. It's a fairly interesting disclosure that's required by GASB. So if you look at, let's see, page 62 is, it's for the Public Safety Retirement System. The state used a discount rate of 7.85% to calculate the city's share of that net pension liability as of, well, it's actually as of June 30, 2014, because they have to go back a year. We have to give them time to put that estimate together. So there's no way they can estimate it quick enough for the June 30, 2015. So anyway, they use that discount rate, and so we put 5.8 million on the books. But what they're saying there is if economic factors changed and they had to use a 6.85% discount rate, then that liability would go up to 7.3 million. But if the rate increased to 8.85%, things improved, then the liability would decrease to that 4.5 million. So the liability is based on the performance of the plan, and it's based on the activity, the number of people coming into the plan and going out of the plan and retiring, and all those different actuarial factors. So any other, any questions on that before we move on?
Well, at some point, so we're showing a 5.8 deficit that we have there, that we have to make up, correct? I mean, at 5.8, because I know we're going to be behind in that pension plan, and at some point, we don't want to get behind the eight ball that we can't afford to continue to contribute.
Right. It's not like you have to make it up. In fact, in the footnotes, it discloses that the, both of the state plans, using these discount rates and their actuarial studies, they state that the plan will be fully funded. It's, I guess that would mean that if everything panned out the way they've anticipated, and nobody else came into the plan, and you didn't make any more contribu, or you finished your contributions, then those earnings would be sufficient to cover that liability. So it's actually a moving target. Like, another thing that's interesting, like with the state of Utah with their plan, when you go from the, they used, I believe it was close to an 8% discount rate, and when you go to a 9%, you know, you go up 1%, you actually have an asset that you put on your books instead of a liability, because their plan is ahead of the game. So Nevada's pretty similar to Arizona, from what I've seen. Any other questions on that?
Okay. In layman's terms, are we doing things the way we're supposed to do them?
Yes.
Okay. In layman's terms, are we behind in any payments we're supposed to be making to anybody?
No. In fact, there's required disclosures in here on, if you look at the supplementary information on page 72, it shows the city's required contributions, and then the contributions you made. And so that the city made 100% of those required contributions.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Like I said before, if you just continue doing what you're doing, then nothing's really financially different for the city. Okay, so if we move on to talk just a little bit about the government-wide financial highlights, this is, for the city as a whole, all the governmental funds and all the utility funds combined, the equity or the net position is 109 million at the end of June 2015. And that net position over time, if that increases or decreases, can be an indicator of the economic condition of the city. This year, for fiscal year 2015, those, the net assets decreased by 11 million, but we had a $12 million restatement adjustment for that GASB 68 pension liability. So we actually had an increase of 1.2 million before we made that adjustment. So really, it was a good fiscal year for the city. So governmental activities increased by about a million, and the business-type activities increased by just 124,000, pretty close to break even before we consider that adjustment. This next page here, this is page 15, right out of the financial statements. This provides probably the best overall summary of the financial activities of the city for the year. It lists out all of the expenditures on the left-hand side there, related to each function or program, like general government, public safety, and so forth. And then it shows the direct charges and direct operating grants and capital grants related to those programs, and then the shortfalls. And then down below, it reports the general revenues that subsidize those shortfalls, such as your city sales tax and your state revenue sharing and state sales taxes and so forth. So down at the bottom of that, on the right-hand side, you can see that restatement adjustment that we've been talking about, the GASB 68 net pension liability that was put on the books, for 10 million for the governmental and 1.4 for the business activities, for a total of 12. And that's a one-time adjustment. You won't see that going forward. So governmental capital assets decreased mainly because of depreciation. We actually had 1.7 million in additions. We had a 10-wheeled dump with the plow that was purchased for a couple hundred thousand, and the five transit system buses, and some other improvements. The business-type capital assets increased by 2.9 million. We had five, about 5 million in additions and depreciation was 2.2 million. We brought on 4.6 million for the wastewater treatment expansion, and then some other improvements throughout the year. We'll see in a minute the debt that was associated with some of that. So total governmental long-term debt increased by 3.5 million to about 29.5 million. We had 1.3 million in regularly scheduled debt payments. And then another significant thing that happened this last fiscal year was the tax refunding bonds of 8.8 million that were issued. About half of that was used to pay off the GADA Series 2006B bonds, and then there was 4 million that was used to finance the public safety billion, building. And in a minute, we'll see that that's still reflected in cash at the end of the year, because that bond hadn't been spent. So if you see the cash balances go way up, then that's, you need to remember that bond that was issued. Okay. Total business-type long-term debt increased by 2.4 million, mainly because of the sewer system revenue bonds of 3 million that were issued to finance the cost of that wastewater treatment plant that we talked about. That was 4 million. So we'll talk about that in a minute. You know, you notice that the bonds that were issued were 3 million, and the additions were over 4 million. So, and we'll talk about some of the cash reserves and equity balances in the water fund going here in just a minute, that we'll highlight that. So now if we talk a little bit about the fund financial statements, the general fund increased from 5.8 million to 7.2 million, that fund balance. And that, again, probably sounds like a lot, but that's only 64% of the general fund total expenditures for one fiscal year, for fiscal year 2015, to be precise. So the general fund reported revenues in excess of expenditures of 1.4 million, and that was after transfers out of 2.3 million. So the overall increase was 1.4 million. And we, the general fund received 1.4 million more in revenues than were expected to be received by the budget, and then the city spent 1.5 million less than we budgeted to expend. So both positive budget indicators and results for the year. Okay, another, the other major governmental fund that we'll talk about is the HERF fund or the road fund. That fund balance increased from nine, about 900,000 to about 1.5 million during the year. And all of the city's enterprise funds, except for the wastewater fund, reported operating income for the fiscal year, and we'll show some detailed charts of that here in just a minute. Okay, so this brings us to the general fund balance sheet. You can see the assets and liabilities and the fund balance there. The fund balance follows pretty close to the asset balance, because this is reported on what we call modified accrual. It's like really close to cash basis. So most of the fund balance, outside of some payables and some receivables, is basically, frankly, is cash. And that fund balance has increased to 38% over the last five fiscal years. You'll see that that increase is basically reflected from the revenues and expenditure trend analysis here. You can see that the general fund has had excess revenues over expenditures for all of the last five fiscal years. It was pretty close to break even in 2011. And previous to that, we had a few years where expenditures exceeded the revenues. So that's expected to go up and down as the city brings in funds and then expends them on programs and projects that are anticipated. That brings us to the general fund expenditure comparison for the year. We see we're pretty consistent all the way down with each department there, except for public safety and non-departmental. Public safety decreased, I think mainly because of the photo enforcement expenditures that were discontinued. That always reminds me that I actually tested that photo enforcement personally, and paid a fine, and I traced it through the system the next year when I came down to see if it actually worked. I probably shouldn't admit that in public.
Kind of you to do that.
And that brings us to sales tax revenues. Another positive thing to note, for the last five fiscal years, that's grown about 20%. It's gone from 8.67 million to 10.4 million. This last fiscal year increased by 5.19%. And we see similar increases in your franchise vehicle license tax, state sales tax, and then your state revenue sharing as well. You can see increases all the way across the board there. So total taxes, all of those combined, it's up 20.8% over five years, and 5.23% from 14 to 15. So this just shows those state sales tax and total taxes, the changes for each of the last five fiscal years there. You can kind of see that they, over the five years, they average out to about 5% a year. Let's see, let's see. The airport fund, this chart, it kind of, you know, varies quite significantly from year to year. The reason for that is the airport fund occasionally will receive significant grants. So if you look at 2014, the grant revenues were about 2.9 million, and then fiscal year 15, they dropped all the way down to 169,000 as we spent out the last little bit of the airport grant. So that brings us to the utility funds. Now, these are reported on a full accrual basis, accounting for all your assets and liabilities. And the water fund and the sewer fund should report operating income each year on the full accrual basis, so that, so that there's enough revenue, enough cash set aside to fund the future capital outlay. And that's exactly the case with the water fund. Shows pretty good margins there each of the last five fiscal years, outside of maybe 2011. So as a result of that, like I mentioned earlier, the cash position in the water fund has increased. And then as you incur capital costs, you'll be able to fund at least a portion of those, like you did with the wastewater fund, with cash on hand instead of incurring additional debt. So that's a positive thing to see there with the water fund. The wastewater fund is not, is a little bit different picture than the water fund. We see that the wastewater fund reported net losses for fiscal years 2010 through 15. So we still, we see a fairly consistent cash balance in there without, you know, an increase. It's just a small increase, about 14% since 2011, from 7.1 million to just a little bit over 8 million there. So, okay, that brings us, I think this might be the last, the Internal Service or the Health Insurance Fund. This should, this is expected to fluctuate based on demand or the claims and activity. We can see that out of the last five fiscal years, there were two with revenues in excess of expense, and then three years where the expenses exceeded the revenue. This last fiscal year, we had, we had excess revenues in that fund. So again, that reflects on the cash statement there, the trend analysis, that things are pretty consistent over the five years, the small, with the drop there in 14, but then we recoup that in 15. Okay, that brings us to the last couple of charts. So most of the governmental funds of the city have, as you can see there, remained fairly consistent. We had some slight increases or some pretty good increases during fiscal year 15. We had some slight increases or some pretty good increases during fiscal year 15 with the governmental funds. And with the utility funds, we had a $500,000 decrease in equity. But that includes an $834,000 restatement adjustment for Gatsby, and then 809,000 for the wastewater fund, but again, 642, that was the Gatsby adjustment. So pretty close to break even there, uh, before we consider the net pension liability adjustment. That just shows you that the balances with the amounts there in the last chart. So any, any questions? I don't know if I went too fast or not fast enough.
Any questions to council? Comments? Oh, we appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to present this and review that. We also appreciate all the help of your staff, and we, we really enjoy working with them. They've done a good job. We almost made it in December this year, but I think because of Gatsby 68, that put us back to where we are today. That's still pretty commendable. We have several municipalities that haven't issued their statements yet because of that, so. And that, that was a huge effort to implement Gatsby 68, but I think it went really well through our efforts and efforts of your staff. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Next item we have on our consent calendar tonight, we have the proclamation of January 18, 2016, Martin Luther King Day of Service. We have consideration of acceptance of the construction of Fairway Park waterline improvements. We have a consideration of reappointment of board members to the Cholo Municipal Property Corporation, consideration of a memorandum of understanding for cooperative management of Cholo Wetland System, and consideration of approval of commercial hangar sublease agreement between O&amp;O Investments LLC and Boutique Air at the Cholo Regional Airport. And we have consideration of the minutes of the Cholo City Council meeting. Is any questions or comments, further discussion on anything? Not all, look for the vote, or a motion, I guess, I'm sorry. A motion by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Hatch. Call for the vote, all of them in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. This time I'll read the proclamation that we have. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who was born on January 15, 1929, dedicated his life to promoting peace, freedom, equality, and justice for all through nonviolent means. And whereas in 1983, the United States Congress recognized Dr. King's legacy as one of America's outstanding civil rights leaders by adopting the Third Monday in January, the month of his birth, as a federal holiday, and in 1994 designated this holiday as a national day in service. And whereas the Martin Luther King Day, Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service is observed as a day not, not a day off to devote to service projects that strengthen communities, empower individuals, bridge barriers, and create solutions to social problems. And whereas the Cholo City Council in the city of Cholo value and encourage community service and will honor Dr. King's teachings by designating a day in May 2016 to devote to one or more projects that will benefit the entire community. Now therefore, I, Daryl Seymour, Mayor, on behalf of the Cholo City Council, hereby proclaim January 18, 2016, as Martin Luther King Day of Service. And the city of Cholo encourage citizens to volunteer their time and participate with city employees in a service project on May 14 that will strengthen and enhance this community dated this 5th day of January 2016. Thank you. I think last year was, uh, one of the things that was able to do, we probably had about 150 people that showed up and was able to do a, a lot in the city that has made a big difference in our parks and other areas of the city. So we encourage people to put that on their calendar, uh, date there in, in May. Next item we have is a new business, consideration of ordinance number 2016-01, amending section 7-5 building permit fees of chapter 7 building of the Cholo City Code. Mr. Trigaskus.
Thank you, Mayor. If I remember correctly, it snowed in May on the Day of Service. It was a beautiful day in January, though. This is the first of two related items, ordinance 2016-01, and then resolution 2016-01. They are dealing with fees in the building code section of, uh, city code, chapter 7, specifically section 7.5. And particularly what we're dealing with is, as you go through our various sections of city code, we've really tried to make an effort to not put specific fees actually in city code, but rather to adopt them by resolution through the city council. In this case, we have a section of code that still has those fees specifically listed, which is why we're coming to you this evening with an ordinance. This ordinance would remove the specific fees from section 7.5 of city code. And then the following agenda item would adopt those fees by resolution. This would then put those fees in section 7.5, consistent with other sections of city code. As part of the process, we are recommending that the fees for manufactured home inspections be increased. And this will be, I think, discussed more fully in the next agenda item. But that would be an increase to match what the state currently charges for a manufactured home inspection, which we perform on behalf of the state. So with that, staff is available for any questions related to the adoption of the ordinance. And then following this, we would then present information related to the resolution. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Crittenen.
How much of an increase is it?
The increase, currently we are charging $200 for a manufactured home inspection. The state charges $350. They include three inspections with that $350. If you need additional inspections, they then charge you an additional fee for each inspection thereafter. We are not recommending additional fees for inspections, and we are not recommending a maximum number of inspections with that fee. So with the 350, through the city, you would get as many inspections as you needed in order to pass and receive your certificate of occupancy on that manufactured home. Through the state, you'd pay the 350, you'd get three inspections, and then you would pay, uh, I've got the numbers here. You would pay $82 an hour plus mileage at 44 and 1/2 cents a mile. And we're not recommending that we adopt those fees as part of our manufactured home inspections.
Any other question? Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, it, it has a ring of making sense to raise our fee to what the state charged if the city did not do the inspection. There was a time in ancient history when the city did not inspect mobile homes, as I recall. And you had to have a state inspector come in here and provide those services. I got to tell you from personal experience, that was not a fun thing. So I'm thinking, I'm hoping, I'm feeling that the city is providing an actual service here, besides just performing an act and charging a fee. The thing that I see is, at least in the past, I believe, when we were making huge percentage increases in fees, we have done it in stages, instead of just lopping it right on in there. And for that reason, I guess I would favor at least discussion, Mayor, on the idea, maybe we go halfway this year. Assuming the state don't make a giant raise next year, we would maybe pick up and catch up with the state. At that time, I don't see that it would affect the city budget very much. I don't think we're doing very many of these each year, right now, anyway. I don't know. Maybe it doesn't really matter. When you look at the overall cost involved in doing this for somebody, that $200 isn't, isn't a big thing. The additional inspections, the way the state charges them, could really amount to something. I, I, I can see that.
Right.
See that.
I think our city manager shared with me, heard it today, that there was a, a case where the state came up to inspect and they didn't have the proper, uh, equipment to do the inspection. And so they went back and came back for another inspection and then charged the, the client.
Right, because they didn't have their gear.
Because they didn't have the proper equipment to inspect what they needed to inspect, so. It can get, it can get costly. You know, I'm open if council wants to discuss the fee, if it needs to be different, or how we came about just matching what the state is doing and, and the impact that may or may not have on us.
Yeah, and that's, you can discuss that, but this, this agenda item is actually the ordinance, and it's just changing the ordinance so that the fee is removed from there. So probably need to pass the ordinance first, and then we can discuss the fee on the resolution that's coming up.
Okay. But this time I'll ask Ann by, to read ordinance number 2016-01 by title only, since all council members have a copy.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Cholo, Arizona, amending article 7.5 building permit fee schedule of chapter 7 building of the Cholo City Code.
Thank you. Bring it back to Councilwoman Kukavas.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2016-01.
Any other discussion? We have a second by Councilmember Crittenen. Call for the vote, all of them in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Next item we have is the ordinance here. Item A B, consideration of resolution number 2016-01, adopting building permit fee. Mr. Trigaskus.
Thank you, Mayor. A little bit of background, in December of 1998, the city council entered into an intergovernmental agreement, or IGA, with the Arizona Office of Manufactured Housing, or OMH. I'm going to use the acronyms throughout this. This IGA has been renewed several times, most recently in April of 2014. The purpose of the IGA is to allow the city to issue permits and perform installation inspections of manufactured homes and modular or factory-built buildings on behalf of the state. Section 5 of this agreement states, "Permit fees charged by the agency," meaning the city, "shall be the same as the fee schedule created by OMH pursuant to authority under ARS 41-2144R and AAC R4-34-501, and no more than permitted by R4-34-801E." "All fees collected by the agency shall be kept by the agency as compensation for services performed by the agency under this agreement." As indicated in the attached fee schedule, the OMH currently charges $350 for a manufactured home placement permit with a maximum of three inspections included in this fee. Additional inspections are $82 per hour plus mileage at 44 and 1/2 cents per mile. These numbers do not include any additional city permit fees, such as electrical permits, which are not included under the state permit and which may be required by the municipality. Cholo currently charges $200 for a manufactured home placement p, fee, uh, excuse me, manufactured home placement permit, regardless of the size of the home, issued on behalf of OMH, with no maximum number of inspections and no reinspection fee. The city also charges a $200 permit fee for all items not included in the state placement permit and a $50 electrical inspection fee for a total permit fee of $450. This number does not include additional fees, such as development and capacity fees. Staff recommends that the city match OMH's 350, $350 manufactured home placement permit fee with no maximum number of inspections and no reinspection fee, and retain the $50 electrical inspection fee and the $200 permit fee for all items not included in the state placement permit for a total permit fee of $600, excluding additional fees such as development and capacity fees. All other city fees, including development and capacity fees, would remain unchanged. Essentially, if passed as proposed, the total for a manufactured home permit would be $600. Currently, the total for a manufactured permit is $450. So it would be an increase of $150. With that, staff is available for questions.
Councilmember Kelly?
When I first heard the numbers, I somehow perceived a difference of more than $150. I'm sorry. I apologize for that. It almost sounded like what you read at the first of that presentation required us to match their fee. Do you think that that's what that said?
The wording in the, uh, in the IGA states that we shall match what the state charges. However, we have had discussion with the Office of Manufactured Housing, and their interpretation of that is that we don't necessarily have to charge the exact number. We just cannot charge more than what they are charging. So in this case, they are charging 350. That's the maximum that is permitted under their fee schedule, and we are requesting just to match that number.
Although we are, we are reducing what they could charge, ours as a maximum, or theirs can, is a slighting skill still by more inspection fees.
That is correct, yes.
Councilwoman Kukavas?
And their fees are basically charged outside the city limits, because we're doing all of the inspections within the city limits.
They, they are charged, but to anyone who does not have an IGA with the state. And I pulled that information this afternoon, and, uh, I've got it available here. There are currently 106 jurisdictions that were listed. 38 of those do not have an IGA with the state, and that includes, for example, Avondale, Casa Grande, Cave Creek, just a number of different municipalities do not have an IGA. So if I were to go, for example, to Casa Grande, inside of the city limits of Casa Grande, I would still go to the State Office of Manufactured Housing to get a placement permit. I would still have to go to the city of Casa Grande to get a city permit as well. And that city permit covers things such as verifying that the zoning is correct, that they meet the proper setbacks. Do they, are they in a floodplain? Are we going to have to extend utilities? Basically, everything outside of the footprint of that manufactured home is covered under the city permit.
Vice Mayor.
Since I think most of the manufactured homes anymore are outside of the city limits, like I said, I don't think there's a lot going on inside. Does anything change in the county whatsoever? They probably do their own inspections, but where, what are their fees like?
Uh, the county has an IGA with the state as well. So if you go to the county, you would apply through Holbrook, Navajo County, to get that placement permit. I'm not aware what their specific fees are. I don't have that number available. I apologize.
Can I add to that? So adding to that, we obviously can't go out of the city limits to help the county out, or can we?
No. We have been asked by the Office of Manufactured Housing in the past to do an inspection on their behalf outside of the city limits. We declined to do that inspection. Our interpretation is that our IGA is for the city limits of Cholo only and does not authorize us to perform inspections outside of the city limits.
Could be a liability thing.
If we had an IGA with, say, Navajo County or Pintop Lakeside to perform inspections on their behalf, then we could do that. For example, the city of Holbrook has an IGA with Navajo County, so that Navajo County actually performs the inspections inside of the city limits of Holbrook.
Thank you.
Approximately how many building permits have we had for manufactured housing?
Uh, last calendar year, I believe it was eight.
Councilmember Crittenen.
I move to approve resolution number R2016-01, adopting a building permit fee schedule.
We have a motion, we have a second? We have a second by Vice Mayor. Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote, all of them in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Trigaskus. Our next item we have is item 8C, consideration of resolution number R2016-02, revising term expiration dates for commission, board, and committee members. Ms. Kurosaki.
Thank you, Mayor. The Cholo City Code allows the city council to create and appoint community members to serve on commissions, boards, and committees whose responsibility and role is to assist the council by discussing research and sometimes making recommendations to the council on specific matters or issues related to city business. Currently, we have four active commissions, boards, and committees. It's the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Adjustment, Aviation Advisory Committee, and the Parks and Rec. Committee, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Because these entities were established in various years, their expiration dates of the members, um, are also vary quite widely. And with the new state law, we held our first consolidated election in the fall of 2014. What happens is a newly seated council member would now begin serving in December. And so after discussion with the council at the retreat last October, um, we decided that to give a newly seated council member time to learn and understand his or her new role and to streamline the process of making the appointments for the council, um, we're recommending that the expiration dates of all these committees end at the same time. Um, and following our discussion, the consensus was to change it to a date in March of odd-numbered years and, which has resulted in resolution R2016-2, um, which would apply to all of these four committees, boards, commissions, and all future ones.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? I'll look for a motion. Vice Mayor?
I move to adopt resolution number R2016-02, revising term expiration dates for all commission, board, and committee members for the city of Cholo.
Second by Councilmember Kelly. Any other discussion? Call for the vote, all those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you.
Mayor, one comment on that is, our airport committee are two-year terms at this time, and we're going to, we'll be bringing something forward to the council to make those four-year terms to be consistent with the other committees we have, and we'll bring that forward in the next couple of months.
Next item we have is summary of current events. Uh, council members wishing to share our current events, may do so. If nobody raised their hand, I'll come to my report, which is no report tonight, and turn the time to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year to everybody. We hope everybody enjoyed our annual holiday events last month, the, the Cholo Shines and the other events we had, and thank those who braved the colds with us on the Deuce of Clubs drop on New Year's Eve. It was a good event and quite a few attending that event. We just want to thank and commend our public works, parks and facilities, maintenance, airport, and police employees for the ongoing efforts to clear the streets, runways, and city facilities, and keeping everyone safe during our winter storms. We have one anticipated this week, and our crews do a great job. We want to thank our citizens for their patience and remind them to keep vehicles off the sides of the street to help our snowplow operators to do their jobs effectively. Just a reminder, you can still recycle Christmas trees until this Thursday, January 7, by dropping it off with all the decorations removed at the Frontier Park parking lot north of the Deuce of Clubs on 9th Place. The trees will be used as biomass fuel for the Novo Power Plant and Snowflake. The Recreation Department is accepting, um, and applications for boys and girls grade 1 through 6 for our basketball league. The registration closes this Saturday, January 9. The cost is $35 per player, which includes a team t-shirt. Staff, our recreation staff's also selling tickets for the popular annual Daddy Daughter Dance, which will be held on February 5, Friday, February 5 this year, 6 to 8 p.m. in the city campus gymnasium. The tickets are $10 per couple and $5 for an additional daughter. Um, they sell out fast, so we encourage you to go buy your tickets as soon as you can. For more information on that registration or buying those tickets, you can call 532-4140. And finally, as Mayor Seymour proclaimed earlier in the evening, we will have our annual community project on, to commemorate, commemorate the King Day of Service on May 14. As we get closer to that day, we'll provide more details on how you can volunteer for that service project. Thank you.
Thank you. Scheduling the meetings, uh, we have a schedule here of the ones that we have coming up. Any other meetings? See no others?
I just, just a reminder for the public, we have, we're going to, we start our, um, budget process at the first of the year, and on Tuesday, January 19, we start, um, a budget overview with the council. And then two days later, on Thursday, January 21, we'll have our town hall-style budget meeting designed for citizen input at 6 p.m., and that's January 21st at 6 p.m. That's the first town hall budget meeting, where we welcome everybody to join us here.
I think, see no other business, so adjourn this meeting.